Start the public hearing at 6:00 p.m. Everybody has a chance to speak. I'm gonna try to limit it to two minutes. We've heard a lot the last time we had this planning board meeting, so you're looking for new stuff? Anybody has a new song they want to sing? We're here for an hour to listen to it, so if I ask you to stop speaking, please stop speaking. I assume you folks are here to represent all mountain camps. It's nice to see you, brother.
Tyler can't be here, he's off guiding up his son.
Yep, understandable. I would love to be. So let's start, let's, the subject at hand is the airplane traffic at Ball Mountain Camps, not current airplane traffic, but future airplane traffic in and out of Ball Mountain Camps. So we'd like to say something.
I just wanna say, and it goes back to the last meeting, and I just wondered why at the last meeting Tyler's meeting said Peter doesn't care.
Understand. So the reason we're having the meeting is there was some complaints about the lack of notice for the meeting. So the town arraignment in our ordinance says we have three days to notify the public. That's it. I think they're currently changing that to seven days, which is a little more time, but that's something to be learned out of this last process.
But I just thought, he said he didn't care. What are we, what is the purpose?
I understand, but we all get emotional. We all say things we'd like to reach out and take back. And I'm sure if you could reach out and take that back, you would have, maybe not, but I would assume yes. So, Rose.
I just think that we're all probably in agreement that the CUP from before that allows them to land planes there. I don't think we have a problem with them landing planes. I think we'd rather have the seaport be in Ransley Lake out of the area of very close residential properties swimming and boating. I in my years on the ambulance attended four airplane crashes, three of them were
Larry Coop?
Mr. Coop, Mr. Coop. The doctor done, and it's coming off the end of the runway. This area, this area here, this area anywhere, but this area here. Because your resources are very limited, but I would hate to see anyone get hurt. That's, that's the only concern I really have. I get a big kick out of the plane. I told you before, I have my pilot's license. And I'm listening to the engines, I'm listening, I'm watching them pull the flaps, I'm listening to them pull the power. You know, I enjoy watching them land and take off. It's a very short period of time. I know the boys have all been practicing out there in the last weekend. They just burn them up the old avgas like crazy. But they're practicing in the middle of the lake where it's safer with the not shingle ripping coming in, giving themselves a lot more safety. And giving all of us a lot more safety, and that's, that's my major concern. The looms have wings and they die. The mill foil wells off the pontoons. You know, the water quality with, with avgas or any other gas is what it is. It's gonna evaporate. I think we need to limit this, not disparage anybody. My God, if I didn't get up in the morning and think that I could offend a half a dozen people, you know? I mean, you know that my day would be ruined.
Thank you, Rose.
Yes, Lee, I just wanted to read a statement under the record. My name's Alan Levy. I represent the Musluk Mcgannick Improvement Association, West Service President. We have about 175 members, all residents of Musluk Mcgannick and Kupsetik Lakes. Upon review of the Ransley Town Ordinance, applicable to all mountain camps requests for conditional use permit and subject to tonight's hearing, I hereby submit the following comments, additional comments. Under section 38.6.3.1, under standards for conditional use permit, a conditional use may be granted by the planning board only in the event that the applicant has established to the satisfaction of the planning board that the proposed use will not have a significant adverse impact upon the value of or quiet possession of surrounding properties greater than would normally occur from such use of the zoning district. In this case, a seaplane base will have a much greater impact in terms of noise and other commercial use requiring shoreland locations such as piers, docks, wharves, breakwaters, marinas, or similar commercial uses. In addition, the planning board is required by section 38.6.3.3 to consider the potential use of noise, vibration, and other nuisances. Old Mountain Camps is situated in the most congested area of shoreline with most of the lake's residential structures located within three quarters of a mile in either direction. This already results in a significant congestion and approval of the requested conditional use permit would elevate the noise level and have material adverse impact on surrounding neighbors. Planning Board is also required under section 38.6.3.2 to consider the intensity of the proposed use, including the amount and type, and type of traffic to be generated compared to surrounding uses. Furthermore, because of the proposed facility is located in the shoreline zone under 38.6.4.7, the planning board must determine that the proposed use will not result in unsafe conditions. Old Mountain Camps is the sole source of rain fuel on the lake, thereby resulting in a constant stream of boat traffic around its docks, which also accommodates swimmers, water skiers, canoe and kayak paddlers, as well as guests of the camps. This poses a significant incremental safety valve issue. In addition, it would compound the already high congestion created by the traffic of boats coming out of and returning to Haynes Landing, which serves as the principal launch of boats coming onto Musluk Mcgannick Lake. All of this results in an even more dangerous situation. Thank you for your consideration. I'd like to have this written into the record if I can.
All right. I didn't get to make it to the last meeting. I'm going to fill it. I know 90% of you in this room. I think a lot of you know me. I'm sorry if my brother hurt feelings last meeting. He meant no disrespect and was quite frankly shocked with you guys' reaction. Nobody could step forth and talk to him. We all wrote letters, emails, put it on Facebook, tried to embarrass my family. That would not have happened if my dad was around. A lot of you have great respect for him and had great respect for him. And I think it's very disrespectful for you guys to do what you did in the way you did it. My family has been here for each and every one of you. For my life, my father's life, my great grandfather's life, we've been here for generations. I know you wrote that in your letter as well, that generational families have been up here. Tyler does not care if this goes through or not. He doesn't want to disappoint and disrespect any of you as much as he felt on the last meeting, so if he knew that this was gonna be such an uproar, he wouldn't even try. And that's really all I have to say. I want you guys to know that my family is disappointed in everybody that wanted to work the way they did. So, thank you.
I'll make one statement. I'm a neighbor. You don't know me, but you probably know my family because her husband's always been here for many, yeah, right, I'm known for my life. But I think one of the reasons he may have been so surprised is nobody knew about the proposal. So we learned about the hearing last time, maybe one to two days before the hearing, and weren't even sure what the proposal was. The notice was covered up in the acoustic post office, no fault of anybody's, but it wasn't, wasn't prominently displayed. And I think one of my neighbors called to find out that the proposal was a seaplane. We didn't even know it was about seaplanes. So part of the uproar probably is the dual communication error. And at that point, there was a hearing happening, a public hearing, one day later, and no one had seen the application or even knew anything about what the proposal was. So you can imagine why people were you know, came out in large numbers to meet. So I just want to share that with you. It's not that anyone meant disrespect particularly, but nobody knew what was happening, and that's a lack of communication to the other end. So, but I think for myself, I just want to highlight the safety issue. You have one report of a near miss collision between a seaplane and a skier that already happened. And I share all the concerns about the number of boats. As a person who has family members who swim long distances, a neighbor who swims long distances in this very part of the lake, in addition to my own kayaking and stuff, I think nobody's currently looking at the sky when they're in the lake for safety. So I think it's a significant, this probably it's narrow.
As you guys know, we haven't even carved out the headstone for my father yet. My brother got all of this thrown onto his lap, and he's still trying to make ends meet. So for him to put this in at the end of this busy year, that's just the time that he had to fit it in. And you still had a day and a half to call us and express your feelings, and we could have gone in a different direction.
We didn't even know what it was about, Mike. It took us, we didn't know until the day before there was that seaplane.
My, my comments were not towards you then, it was towards the people that.
It gets enough, but I mean.
So that's a very short public hearing. Oh, go ahead.
I have no disrespect for any of your family. Actually, Quinn, you and Tyler were little kids when my son worked for your dad. Long hours, and did very well. My name's Stan Gris. I own a camp, I'm great. And talking about generational, we started at the Barkers. And I know my grandchildren, the fourth generation, are enjoying the lake as well. I did write a note yesterday to the board and no disrespect at all.
I appreciate that.
And I really enjoyed all the years that I spent with your dad.
I appreciate that.
So I'm, I'm raising this to express my opposition to the request for the conditional use permit. As mentioned, the area is really congested with boaters and paddlers and swimmers, and safety is a paramount issue. While taking off, the nose of a seaplane is elevated and obscures the pilot's vision according to the safety concerns of the Seaplane, Seaplane Pilots Association. Noise is another issue. The EPA has set noise impact guidelines. It classifies 65 to 70 decibels as a quote significant adverse noise impact. It classifies greater than 70 decibels as quotes levels have unacceptable public health and welfare impacts. According to the Seaplane Compatibility Issue Report from the Seaplane Pilots Association, these seaplanes produce greater than 70 decibels when measured from 1,000 feet distance. This is absolutely unacceptable to onshore residents. There are no control towers guiding pilots to land safely. Visualizing kayaks and swimmers on the lake would be very difficult. There was another lake requesting, another lake where a request was made for a similar provisional conditional use permit. And the argument that those people made in opposition stated is unreasonable to require the many recreational users of the lake to limit their access to the lake so that a commercial operation could profit and entertain few visitors. As I mentioned, we are a family of four generations who have owned range shore property on Musluk. Camps and Ransley Plantation and have paid property taxes to enable us to enjoy the relative peace and quiet of the lake in a safe environment. But we again oppose the permitting of this provisional, a provisional use permit. And thank you very much.
Thank you.
You know, we do not care if we have this. We weren't planning on having a seaplane base. You guys are thinking of it as what Ransley Lake has. This was not going to be that. And another thing, I think a lot of you forget that we are a resort. That means we have a lot of things going on, and I would think you'd all be happy for that. We are the oldest business that's still alive in Ransley and Austin. And I would think you would want the best for us. We want the best for all of you, because who do all of you call when you need help? My God. We have gotten up in the middle of the night to go help people. And I'm not saying this so you will change your mind and this and that, we're still gonna help people. But it, it seems like you're willing to attack us on this plane thing without knowing our true feelings. And I, I know you said you didn't get it till late. I don't know who got it, but I do know what was written on Facebook, and that person's not here. And it was all a bunch of lies, and everybody read it and got crazy with it. And as far as, I guess, my new neighbor didn't realize he was buying next to a resort because at the last meeting, they have weddings, they, they have people sitting around a fire pit. Then someone else, the barge, which had nothing to do with it. Nobody had a problem with the barge. Jean noise owned it, no one, and it was sinking into the lake. Not one person complained about that. When my boys got it floating, a lot of people thought it was great. That is history. And what that barge did was wonderful. I know we're getting off the topic of the planes. But we, Musluk is very important to us, probably more important than any of you because it's our livelihood. And, and I know if my husband was standing here and we keep saying you wouldn't have, I believe, wouldn't have had attacked. I don't know if you feel, and, and other things have come up that you feel you can attack Tyler. But when you do this, you're attacking all of us. Yes, I am the owner of Ball Mountain Camps, and people forget that. I've owned it for about 32 years, but people seem to think I don't. And so we are open for any discussions on any part of it. And yeah, we did feel really bad and really attacked when everybody came last. I didn't think anything big deal. And then when I saw the video or the meeting, I was in shock. I was in shock. Some of you, I, I couldn't even believe what you're saying. And we are reasonable people. You come and talk with us. I had a lengthy discussion with my other neighbor, and they all said, yes, we totally get it. And but I mean, we can sell the place, and I don't think anybody would be happy.
It's not gonna happen. We just want to get along. We want to be neighborly. This is a small town. We want to stay that way.
But when people come and attack you and say bad things about you, and in the next breath, can you come help us? And the Heritage Trust, Steve did so much for the Heritage Trust. And if the Heritage Trust group really, and we are part of the Heritage Trust group, think we want to hurt the lake? Absolutely not. We want to do everything to preserve it. And, and some of you have the wrong idea about planes. It's always been planes coming into Ball Mountain Camps. You know, I was married to a pilot, my kids are going to be pilots, we have two planes. We had just the other day, two planes come in and spend the night. Planes love to come in and have dinner. And as far as mill foil goes, these planes land in deep water. You should look at the boat trailers more than seaplanes. That's what transports your mill foil. And as far as wounds, no, not hurting wounds. Boats hurt wounds more than, well, it's fishing people that hurt wounds more. So we're easy to talk with. Yeah, I, I was very upset to begin with. And that's what. I didn't.
I'm sorry. Go ahead. Yeah.
No, I didn't understand what, what we're waiting for.
Oh. Technology. Would you like to speak?
I just had a question. I missed the last meeting, and I wondered what the increased amount of traffic would mean.
I think it's undetermined right now. I mean, I can tell you the sea-based plane out of Ransley doesn't seem to have that much traffic at all, but I don't know.
He does make five flights a day on, on one good weeks during the summer, and he was, middle of the summer, he's doing one or two flights a day. There's just not enough volume up here to sustain a business like that. The owner of that company has a seaplane base down towards Florida, and he travels the Bahamas. That's where he makes his money. This is his retirement gig up here. There's not enough traffic to really sustain a good seaplane business up here. Tyler was just looking to get a couple dinners in.
So it's not gonna change very much. I mean, they're just occasional.
Marty, are we live? Yep.
We are live. I'm waiting on Mr. Simmons to speak. We have another person that's on here, so I'd like to speak. Can I go ahead and unmute her as well?
Yes.
That would be Ms. Butler.
Yeah, hi, Lee. It's, hello, board. This is Pat Butler, actually, on the line here. Appreciate the opportunity, and I just want to say that, you know, we're the direct neighbor to Ball Mountain Camps, and they have been fantastic neighbors. We, we, we like them personally. They're, they've been very good neighbors, but we're just opposed to this whole float plane thing. And as I say, you know, we're not opposed to the occasional float plane coming and going, but now that, you know, if you grant this conditional use permit, you're allowing yet another commercial use on a highly protected lake. And for us, you know, on the, the permit itself talked about, you know, two or three days. Kevin at the last meeting talked about Thursday to Sunday, four days, nine to five. So for flights coming and going every hour, if he's busy, it's coming and going every hour. And to the point that was made earlier by, by Alan Levy was the safety. And we see it in front of our property all the time. It's a, when we have people there, where they're, they're paddle boarding, they're kayaking, they're doing whatever, and that dock is a very, very busy dock. There's people getting fuel. They have, you know, they're picnicking there, they're fishing, they're kayaking, they're doing whatever. And occasionally with the mooring balls that are there, the planes will have to wait, and they'll have to stop in front of our property to get a spot on the dock in order to, to unload their passengers. And so you just have a potential very unsafe environment coming there with a, with a whirling propeller and people, a lot of people recreating there at the campground, at the Ball Mountain Camp. So, so again, you know, for us, it'd be like, and, and it's like living next to an airport. If you have planes coming and going every hour for several days on a weekend, it's just like living next to an airport. And we just, you know, the noise, it's just, it's the noise and everything else. So this is no slam on Ball Mountain Camps and what they do. They're great people. They have a great business. It's this, we're just simply opposed to having a commercial use, a float plane business coming and using that dock.
Thank you, Pat. Man?
I was just gonna say, you already have a plan, I said, let's know why they're playing. And people come and have dinner there already, so why does it need to be that already doesn't get much use?
So it shouldn't be a bother. We could just throw this away, and we can just let them do what they want to do.
But they don't need the seaplane business to get people there to dinner, because the road book right there.
Marty, anybody else?
I'm not sure why Mr. Simmons is speaking. He raised his hand, so but that's, that's me only, the ones that have a question to speak.
All right. Um. I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Hey, I'm a couple doors down from you guys. We're only a few years in. We don't know anyone, we'd like the people we met and are developing great relationships. And we think you guys have been, you know, some of the weddings have been a little loud, but that's a conversation for another day, and happy to have the director with you guys, and appreciate that now that we can put faces to them. You know, simply put, we live in South Portland the majority of the time. We're in the flight path of the Portland jet port. It's us. And so when we're up here, it's the noise for us. I think there's safety. There's other, I'm not as smart as Alan on the decimal points and all the regulations and whatnot, but just purely, we don't want the increased noise and traffic going over our heads of the planes. And so I'm not asking you to not do things you're already permitted and allowed to do. I would infringe on your existing business, and that's the business that was there when we bought our place. And so I respect that. And want nothing, the, the best for you guys. Like, my kids love going in there and seeing the Moose on the lots of highlights on weekends up in the winter, we go have dinner. So we hope this for our family, no one felt attacked from us or anything like that. So we hope we can be opposed to the increased plane traffic purely for the noise, because we got it at home and it stinks. We have it up here, and that's your right to have what you have there, and we just wouldn't like it to be expanded. Appreciate we have the forum to do that respectfully, so.
All right, Marty?
That's it.
All right. Thank everybody for coming. It's a few less than last time.
I understand by law, if it was to pass, then anybody on the lake could open up a seaplane also.
No.
That has to be.
No. No, that's probably the last commercial conditional use permit you'll ever see on that lake is what's currently there. That's it.
So, and, and the only reason for that is they're the only commercial operation on the lake at this point. There are no other commercials. Everything else is residential zone.
There will never be any other one. So if you want to write them a check and turn it back into residential, they'll probably.
We don't need any money.
But no, I will tell you for a fact, there will never be another commercial business on that lake.
No, till the next one files.
No, we can't. It's not zoned. There's one thing that we cannot change, and that's zoning.
We're the only ones. Like I said, we, we don't want to upset everybody. You guys don't want this to go through.
So this is, this is a big decision for all of us. I know we've all had, you know, our different thoughts. We have 60 days from today to make the decision. I don't think the plane business is gonna do much in the next 60 days. So we'll make the ruling within that 60 days. I don't know when it'll be. But there's a process. If we approve it, there's a process you folks can go do to go to the appeals board. If we disapprove it, they can go to the appeals board. It can end up in Superior Court. This is my decision, or the decision of this board is not the final decision by any means. But we'll make a decision based on chapter 38. But we'll make a decision based on chapter thirty-eight, chapter thirty-eight was voted on by the residents of the town of Ransley and it took five years to create chapter thirty-eight. It was an arduous journey, believe me. You voted on it and it's in that book and it says you can or you cannot do anything, that's what we have to abide by, no matter how we feel about anything. That's our job. We are neutral. We are land used ordinance committee, that's it, not a civil use committee, just land use. It says you can do it, you can do it, if it says you can't do it, you can't do it, that's it. But thank you all for the concern, again, I'll say this, like I said the last meeting, we have never had a plane of public hearing with this many people. I wish more people would show up because some nights we sat here for months on end and not see one person. That's it, but it's nice to see the community involved, I would like to say to Bernie, and Quinn. A lot of these letters started out with how much respect they had for your family. And then it turned to however, they felt they didn't want to deal with the planes.
It's just a small town thing of coming to somebody and speaking to their face before you go behind.
Absolutely, no, I get it, I get it, we all get it, but thank you, everybody.
I have to process clarification.
Yeah.
So I think it's a fair point, right, so. We found out about it because we got something in the mail a couple of days before we're in South Portland, so I think if it's. And you said something about the notice period would be longer, I think if the notice period was longer. Or there was a bit more content for the application available, I think that, I think you mentioned that, I think that would have been helpful for everybody and I certainly don't want it. Blind side, so whatever administrative, if we could, if there's a.
Yes.
A solve there, I think that might have taken some of the the heat off of them.
We, the town learned something from this incident. We did learn something because as soon as that came back and we had to do another public hearing. There was questions, that's how many days is it, and they told me it was three, so talking to Brett. We decided to go with the state recommendation of seven days. Which. I mean, if you're involved, you're involved, if you're not, you're not, luckily, there's always somebody that's got an ear. Open to what's going on down here, so.
And I had no idea either, just to let you know.
Like timing, timing content, right, that maybe people would have felt like they had time.
Right.
And nobody's fault, right, just the process.
Well, it's just the process, you know, it's, it is what it is, but again, it's nice to see that so many people had a concern. Do the bad, I will say we've gotten. Not as many inquiries from people that support it. Talked to a lady today, she's say, she absolutely loves to sit and have her coffee and watch those planes go in and out. I like to sit on my porch and watch them, but doesn't mean I want it thirty feet from my door, so I don't know how I feel about that, but. Thank you again for coming, we will make our decision.
And one other note, as of the end of this meeting, the jury is sequestered, please no more voice bills, no more email. I beg you, please.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Yes. Where's Mr. B? Get the heat on.
We got a little bit of a mission to drop off for y'all's places. And I mean, your first name, Rachel. Ah, okay, yeah, yeah, yeah. I like that.
Yeah, 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 those are very good.
Nice to meet you.
Do we want to take a very? Close the public hearing at six thirty-five.
Want to take a break?
I do, Marty, this gentleman gave you this document, is there any way we can put it into something?
Legitimate.
And I can't merge, I can't merge, thank you.
Can I start? I can't start everyone's at six.
You start bringing, bringing a meeting whenever, yeah. Wish there was like an introduction.
Pause about.
Causing it stop.
What's that? I have.
You got?
Yeah.
Oh, no, it's right in front of my eyes. A little moron something.
I, let's start the regular, are we live?
Yeah.
Start the regular meeting at six thirty-seven. Click on disclosed contract to do this. I will have to accuse myself on one item. I will. Therefore, therefore, my employer.
You're going to sit in the crowd too.
Yeah, oh yeah, that's right. Just wants to the agenda, right? Thank you, public to speak on non-adjunct items. Review minutes, September tenth, twenty twenty-four, regular meeting, I need a motion to accept. Make a motion to accept September tenth. Minutes. I'll second that. All in favor? Correspondent? New business, Shoreland zoning application two ninety-four Shore Road. Map zero two nine lot zero four one. I make a motion that applicant. Two nine four Shore Road, map zero two nine lot zero four one, application is complete. Second. All in favor? The next meeting is the October ninth. Yeah. So we're gonna have, I think we're gonna have three sidewalks that night?
Two.
Two, two, sorry. Alright, five P M, October ninth. Shoreland zoning application sixty, oh, I gotta get up. Okay, Shoreland zoning application sixteen old railroad drive map zero two six lot zero zero nine. Except application as complete. I'll make more, except sixteen old railroad drive, oh, two six lot nine is complete. Second. I like that, second. Favor. And we'll do that site visit at five fifteen. Yeah, we'll directly, yeah, we're right beside each other, right, Shore Road. Or railroad drive. So that was Sean and. Leo. And five thirty P M, is that right?
Five fifteen, right, we'll just go right after the.
Which one we go first?
The. The Shore Road.
Okay. Right, conditional use permit application twenty-two sixty-eight Main Street, map zero zero eight lot zero zero six. Except application as complete. I'll make a motion, I'll accept two two six eight, map zero zero eight lot zero zero six, application is complete. I'll second that, all in favor? Schedule public hearing, we want to do that at six P M on the ninth? Number four. I'm sorry.
Notice to a better.
Oh, yeah, please, as soon as possible. Are we starting the seven day process on this?
Yeah, I'll get this a brickworm one, I'll get rid of this.
Thank you. So if that becomes a problem, I just want to say, if that becomes a problem, we'll just move those back.
Yeah, we can.
I'm not going to put too much pressure on and understaff.
Exactly.
Municipal building already. There's in there a business, Shoreland zoning application one twelve, West Door Set Road, map zero three four lot zero zero seven, finding of facts. One. So as we go through this. I will make my motion, I'll be looking for a second. Number one, standing, the applicant has standing to present this application as representative to the owner, that's my motion. Second. All in favor? Two, authority, the planning board has the authority to consider this request for replacement of a structure as required by section thirty-eight dash three dash three dash five. Of the Ransley Town Code, the code enforcement officer made a determination on August twenty eighth, two thousand and four. I'm sorry, two thousand and twenty-four, the applicant closed building permit is within the required setback from the normal high water line. Of the body in Ransley Lake, and so the application has been referred to the planning board, that's my motion. Second, all in favor? Three, in determining whether a practical alternative exists as required by section thirty-eight dash three dash three dash five dash two of the Ransley Town Code, the planning board shall consider the following. A, the size of the lot, B, the shape and slope of the land, C, the location of other structures on property and on adjacent properties. D, the location of septic system and other on-site soil suitable for septic systems. E, the existing architectural plan, F, the potential for soil erosion, G, the type and amount of vegetation to be removed to accomplish the relocation. Based on three A G above the planning board, as there is or is not a practical alternative to retain the original floor. All your instruction with the quiet setback, there is not, that's my motion. Second. All in favor? Due to the nature and size of the expansion of planning board requests, that written notice is not mailed to the director butters and the property as part of the consideration for significant adverse impact upon the value and right of quiet possession of sound surrounding property. Is not, is my motion, second. All in favor? Five is out, six, determination, first, let me step back, conditions if any required to ensure compliance would be above sections of the Ransley Town Code, is there any conditions?
So Mr. Chairman, can I just? Instead of thinking about, if you look at their engineered plans, they don't have. Consideration for drainage around that upper part and I'm worried that when that rain comes down on that mountain and it hits that, that allotment, is it going to? Do the same thing?
Yeah.
Is there, is there consideration for some type of drainage process or diversion process that they can build? To prevent the dilution of water coming down that hill and hitting against that, that route.
Okay, would you like to see that as an engineered plan or would you like to see that as? Modified plan?
I would like to see that as them giving serious consideration to it.
So the condition would basically be to provide us with a plan for stormwater diversion?
Yeah.
Okay, so.
Sorry, but. If, but that's up to the board, I'm just. We just walk up there and saw that ravine is is cut pretty good from one of, and that's clearly where that first wall probably deteriorated. Would be my guess, so doing nothing there. Are you, are you going to be doing this in five years when the next one fails?
It's a long ways from the bottom from where we were at the top of that hill, it sees a lot of water. So of course, I think the condition should be that they should provide us with a plan. Of diverting the water before it gets to the slope. So now, how we want to write the.
The gentleman that was there, I think he applied for the permit, but he was. He was saying there was no trees to be cut, which I understand that. That thing's gonna have to be shelved, I don't know what the proposed line, you can see on the map that it's like terrace back per se.
Yeah.
Because of the slopes, that's how you read the map, but. There's some major pressure on that, I don't know what they plan on putting, but that's. I don't, I've been using cages again.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I hope the drainage behind that is.
Well, that's why we should put it in here.
Yeah, real good to alleviate that. Not with that same material.
Well, I'm sure they're in agreement, I mean, it's not like they.
Yeah.
It's a little costly. Okay, so I'm gonna make a condition, condition one, provide a plan. To divert stormwater runoff before construction begins. Doesn't have to be a crazy plan, it just has to be a plan that you think. Your office says.
It makes sense.
Six, determination based upon the preceding findings and conclusions, the application for this project within Shoreland Zone is hereby granted with the noted conditions, that's my motion. Second. Peter, here you go. All in favor? This new use permit amendment, one twenty-five Ball Mountain Road, map zero one eight lot zero zero three. Finding of facts.
You can inlet at this point, that's what you're choosing.
No, no, what I'm choosing. No, we said we had sixty days. Said I, I very specifically said I had sixty days. Do we want to make a decision on this tonight or do we want to? I'm looking for a motion to either.
I would like to vote on it tonight.
I, I'm looking for a motion to approve or deny tonight, I'm looking for a motion to table it until further due. I personally. It's up to the board. I need a motion. One of the other, and I need a second.
I'll make a motion that we vote on to either accept and deny the condition of use permit application. Second.
Sorry? I don't have to vote on that, right? So the, so the, the board would like to vote on approval or denial tonight, is that correct? We all in agreement?
Sure.
Alright, I need a motion to approve.
You ready?
I'm ready. Right. We have to. Can we change back to the old? So I will say this before we start.
Before we start. Who's the cop? I think she does. Well, it's totally different than this one.
For, for a cop.
Right, this is a conditional.
Okay, that's what I said. Right, exactly.
Okay, so one last thing. If we table this, it gives us time to think about conditions.
There has to be conditions. Such as, you know, safety lane and whatnot, for the deference of all those that spoke up. You can say, just Friday, Saturday, Thursday.
Hey, Breck, it's Carl, can you hear me?
Yep.
We're, you guys are on Bald Mountain Road Conditional Use Expansion? Okay, I, I just have one comment to make, and Breck, I know I talked to you about this, I've been playing phone tag with the um, D O T Director of Aviation, Maine, State of Maine Department of Transportation Director of Aviation, regarding any state requirements for commercial um, sea plane operations. Um, I reached out to him a couple times today, he was out last Friday and Monday, um, so I have not touched base with him, but he did leave a voicemail that said there were a couple state requirements, I just don't know what they are. So if you do vote, I, and either way, um, the CEO office would recommend putting conditions of compliance with any state regulations regarding commercial seaplane's operations, and we don't know what they are yet, so just wanted to add that for you guys. That, that would be, again, just a recommendation from code enforcement to the planning board.
Thanks, Carl.
Thank you, Carl.
Yes.
You wanna table it? I guess we don't know if it's approved or denied. If it's approved, then we're gonna spend the next hour putting conditions on it. Which, it's gotta be done anyways. Is everybody even? Stand.
Well, if you wanna wait, we'll just wait.
I just, I mean, I just don't know, I mean, other than that, like you said.
But we don't know if it's approved or denied.
Exactly, we can't make any conditions until we know, so. I think we move forward. Number one. As I read these things, would be like. The applicant has standing to present this application as the owner, that's my motion. Second. All in favor? Authority, the planning board has the authority to consider this application by the proposed use being listed in section thirty-eight dash six dash six of the Ransay Town Code. Simply in Shoreland Zone District, the code enforcement officer made this determined on August twenty-six, twenty twenty-four, that's my motion. Second. Favor. In determining the proposed use impact on surrounding properties as required by section thirty-eight dash eleven dash three dash one of the Ransay Town Code, the planning board shall consider the following. A, the size of the proposed use compared with surrounding uses, the impact on scenic vistas, the intensity of the proposed use compared to surrounding uses, the potential to generation of a nuisance, any unusual physical characteristics of the site, the use of design characteristics to mitigate effects based on three A F about the planning board files. The proposed project does have subnick, does have significant adverse impact on the value and quiet possession of surrounding properties greater than is usual in the zoning district. Second. Does, is my motion? No, all in favor? Four, in determining the capacity of municipal or other facilities serving the proposed use as required by section thirty-eight dash eleven dash three dash two of the Ransay Town Code, the planning board shall consider the following. The ability of traffic movement, pedestrian safety, capacity of the public street network, wastewater disposal system, water supply system, stormwater drainage system, fire department capacity to serve. Based on four A G above the planning board finds the proposed project does or does not create any hazard based on inadequate facilities. I have to say it does not create any hazard based on inadequate facilities. Second, that's. What, it doesn't, does it not create? So it says, if you read it, right, we are talking about the municipality being able to service these things, one, traffic, two, pedestrian safety. I don't think pedestrian safety is enforceable by the local PD on, you're so, you got to. That's an I F N W thing, right?
That's inland fisheries, yeah.
Mm-hmm. All in favor?
You, what'd you say, does not, or does?
Does not. Does not.
Okay, yeah.
Am I right, that's I F N W?
Correct.
Five.
Hold on.
All in favor? Five, if the proposed use is in Shoreland zoning area as required by section thirty-eight dash five dash three of the Ransay Town Code, the planning board shall determine if the following criteria has been met. No result in unreasonable damage to wildlife habitat. Reasonable conversation. Con- con- conservation of shoreline vegetation. Reasonable comfort, comfort, ah, yeah. Conservation of visual points of access to waters as viewed from public facilities. Conservation of points of public access to waters. Reasonable conservation of natural beauty. Regional avoidance of problems associated with floodplain development or use. No result in unsafe or unhealthy conditions, no result in erosion or sediment, no result of water pollution. Okay. Protection of archeological resources as designated by the comprehensive plan. Based on five A G above the planning board finds the proposed project does or does not meet the requirements within Shoreland Zone Area.
Yeah, I can go back to that statement, I haven't seen any plan or inclination of a plan. For unhealthy or unsafe conditions.
Exactly, so this is basically, what's it doing to the shoreline, what's it doing? It's not a high rise, it's not uh, impeding on public access to waters.
Unsafe or unhelpful conditions.
Unsafe or unhelpful conditions, that one's definitely gonna be a. So your un, your unsafe part of the conditions would be to voters or the public because of
black operation of the plants, lack of, you know, designated areas for plants, the land they go off. Areas that people on the ground can physically see to stay away from if they're concerned. I don't believe any of that, it's been discussed for told the house, I don't know, it's gonna take place.
On five eighty above, planning board finds the proposed project does not need the requirements within Shoreland areas, that's my motion.
I'll second.
All in favor? Conditions if any required to ensure compliance with the above section of the Ransay Town Code. Conditions may include, but are not limited to, street improvements, access restriction, hours of use, buffer and screening, utilities improvements, and performance guarantees for offsite improvements. So, I think. I'm looking for a motion to approve or deny.
So, I just have one question.
With noted conditions, if it's granted, we will grant it with noted conditions. I would, if it's granted, I would like to have first condition, meaning that this is not the only condition. That we will spend the next month determining what the conditions of the condition of use permit will be.
If they must comply with state regulations.
State regulations, we need permits from the state, we need verification of no full stickers, we need a safety plan, we need everything. That would be the first condition, if it's approved tonight, if it's not, those two, those four, doesn't matter. So I'm looking for a motion to approve or deny, that's the motion I cannot make.
You're making a motion to, to do what?
I'm not making a motion, I made, you make the one.
Well, I mean, I think, well, we have to vote if we're gonna grant it or not grant before you do anything. Right?
Yes.
And we're gonna put all these stipulations in, I mean, I, I wanted to put in at the time, whether it's granted or not granted, but these facts out of chapter thirty-eight the town voted on for reasons to deny, if we choose to go to the denied permit, because it's what we have, the town voted on, and so it says that we have to uphold in our section thirty-eight for the town. It's public, you know, that's what we're, we're representing now. And there's several sections since chapter thirty-eight, Mr. Levy read, and some other ones that I read that are, you know, definitely would stand to be against it, for sure.
Clearly in our fact finding, there's two sections out of three where it does not meet the requirements within Shoreland areas.
Correct.
That's a fact. There's one that it does.
But is there particular pro, is there particular property considered shoreline and commercial? Our commercial entity in the shoreline.
It's all shoreline, but it's shoreline residential, it's shoreline commercial.
Under a condition of use permission.
They, they are considered a, a non-conforming use in shoreline. Right, and that's section thirty-eight five four of chapter thirty-eight, non-conforming use.
So we would be adding another non-conforming use.
Correct, under section thirty-eight five four, non-conforming uses, there is language dot one for expansions of non-conforming use, and that's really what this is governed by. Since the camp was of its use prior to the adoption of zoning in nineteen eighty-seven, they were the word I don't like grandfathered, which is ultimately a non-conforming use. So, that's kind of what they fall under.
If one of the problem was loading the D N X to back the thirty-eight. Too many of these items on this. Kind of makes work, they're already. Right, we've already voted on it, I mean.
Pretty much, based on.
So I'm assuming this deny due to finding the fun findings above or is what, above this, what we voted on on this? But also, I don't think the applicant came to the table with any game plan as the, you know, any information that give us about, you know, description of the, the project. You know, the, the traffic, the extra traffic or the lack of traffic, I mean, we, we obviously could dictate traffic, how much commercial use that gets.
But it would help if there was.
And what they're gonna do to mitigate the nuisance complaints.
It would have helped if there was a proposal.
Right, with all this, this is what we're gonna do, it's even better than it is not.
There's no plan here, for us to follow the plan.
Right, why, why are we making a plan to make it safe for the public? When that should have already been done and dropped at the table, right, before the application was even brought to us.
So I'm like, I would, a motion to deny.
So I'm gonna make a motion, um, deny due to findings. But actually, like I said, come back and reapply with all of this fell out, so that it's crystal clear, that one's better than.
Right, but currently.
But currently, right, that's, we're out here.
I need a second on the denial.
I will second.
All in favor? Thank you. Shoreland zoning application sixty-three Lake House Road, map zero zero eight lot zero one one. Table on item pending, received a permit by rule. Uh, next meeting's October ninth, don't forget your site visits.
Yeah, we have to recall that, please.
Okay.
So I, I talked to the owner and he said, well, I've been busy, I haven't had a chance to file P P R, and I said, well, when you file P P R and have.
I need a motion to adjourn the meeting. Make a motion to adjourn the meeting at seven oh eight second. All in favor? Thank you.
Good luck.